Good afternoon and welcome to the May 5th meeting of the formal, formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ansari.
Here.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Here.
Councilwoman Guadalu.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Elsie Duarte is here as our interpreter. Will you please introduce yourself?
Yes, Mayor. Good afternoon. As previously mentioned, my name is Elsie Duarte and I will be serving as interpreter for today's audience. I'll now take this time to introduce myself to our Spanish-speaking audience. Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elsie Duarte y estaré sirviéndoles como intérprete para la audiencia de hoy. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G6841 through 6848, S47506 through 47540, and resolutions 21919 through 21923.
Thank you. The formal meeting minutes of January 29th, 2020. Councilwoman Stark, have you had a chance to review them?
Yes, Mayor, I have, and I will make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The formal meeting minutes of February 5th, 2020 were submitted to Councilwoman Pastore for approval. She is not with us, so could we have a motion to suspend the rolls and take items two and three out of order after item 60 so that we can take them when she is with us?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We next move to our liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
So do Mayor. Motion to approve items four through 11, noting that applicant has requested to continue item eight to July 1st, 2021 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please signal nay. Motion passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 12 through 76, except the following: Item 16, 19, 21, 46, 48, 51, 53, and 71 through 76. Items 22, 23, 69, and 70 have been withdrawn, and excluding these items for public comment, item 21.
Second.
Motion and a second. Nice job as the first omnibus as vice mayor. Any comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
Yeah.
Guadalu.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastore. Waring. Thank you. Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thanks. We next move to item 16, mediation services for the Human Resources Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 16.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
No.
Guadalu.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 6-2.
We next move to the Maricopa Association of Governments for annual dues. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 19.
We have a second from Councilwoman Guardado, who helps represent us at the Maricopa Association of Governments. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
No.
Guadalu.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 5-3.
We next move to reopening city services in Parks and Recreation and Human Services Department. Do we have a motion? Or, actually, I'm sorry, we have a brief staff presentation and then we'll go to the motion, I think. We'll recognize Inger Erickson, deputy city manager, to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, today we are here to discuss how we might safely reopen community centers and senior centers. I briefly want to review how we will lay out the presentation today because we have indoor and outdoor facilities we will be discussing. First, the current status will be reviewed, and then we will turn it over to Cynthia Aguilar, who's the acting Parks and Recreation Director, to cover community centers and the reopening, followed then by the Human Services Director, Marcel Franklin, who will discuss the reopening of the 15 senior centers. Then we will have the Dr. Saskia Papescu, the contracted epidemiologist for the city, who's provided us some feedback and guidance on how the city can safely reopen facilities and programs. She'll be available to answer questions and talk through the current benchmarks. Then we'll move on to pool rentals and outdoor permits, and then after that, we'll have the recommendation. Next, I want to talk about what the current status is. As you know, we've been closed for over a year. We closed March 16th of 2020 to all the indoor facilities that provided general public use because of the pandemic. But we did switch, and the staff worked really hard to get some virtual programs and some social activities virtually changed to the virtual format. And so that was very successful, and you'll hear about that in just a minute. We also transitioned the meal program to a home delivery situation so people could get their meals and their nourishment for our seniors. But we also then used that time to check on the seniors because, you know, it was a time of isolation, and we really wanted to make sure that the seniors had the resources and things that they needed. Cynthia Aguilar, the acting Parks and Recreation Director, will now cover indoor community centers.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members, Mayor, members of the city council. As Inger mentioned, our community centers closed and our indoor programming was suspended in March of last year. Since then, the Parks Department transitioned to offering a wide variety of virtual programs for youth, teens, and adults to continue to keep them engaged throughout the pandemic. Approximately 4,500 people have participated in these programs. We also opened a select number of community centers to offer day camps for children of City of Phoenix employees, and also began offering programming within the city's housing sites to support distance learning and provide limited in-person recreation activities. These camps had a combined attendance of over 9,000 participants. Over the last several months, we've also made many improvements within our community centers to help us prepare to reopen safely. We place hand sanitizer stations in our facilities. We've also worked with our Public Works Department to increase ventilation in these facilities. We've installed touchless light switches and social distancing markers on the floors, and we've also placed plexiglass barriers at our customer service counters to provide contact-less customer service. The department recognizes the importance of providing in-person programming options to our community and has worked with the city's contracted epidemiologists to prepare a plan to reopen safely. According to the Arizona Department of Health Services, we are currently in the substantial risk category. Based on this, the plan follows the epidemiologist's recommendations to open with a tiered approach, incrementally reopening community centers and indoor programs based on the current overall COVID transmission risk category. While we are in the substantial category, the plan calls for reopening a total of 14 of our 30 community centers at a 50% capacity for our annual summer youth program. Additional indoor recreation activities would also be offered by registration. If approved, the summer program would run Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the 14 identified Tier 1 locations. The program would start on June 7th with registration beginning on May 12. The program serves participants who are 6 to 12 years of age. Most of these programs are fee-based. However, our goal is to make sure that these programs are accessible to everyone. Therefore, scholarships are available as it is our goal to make sure that we do not turn anyone away. All staff and participants would be required to wear masks, and also based on the feedback we received from the epidemiologist, all meals would take place outdoors. We certainly recognize that over the summer, we experience very warm temperatures, and therefore we would ensure that meals take place where there is shade, and we will also be securing portable cooling towers to make it more comfortable. We also have established a contingency plan for inclement weather, including those very warm heat advisory days. This information would be clearly communicated to parents upon registration. This slide here shows a map of where the 14 Tier 1 community centers are located. As you can see, these sites provide geographic coverage throughout the city, from as far south as Awatuki at the Pecos Community Center to Desert West Community Center in West Phoenix, Longview Recreation Center to Central East Phoenix, and as far north as the Buff Community Center on Pinnacle Peak Road. 11 of these 14 centers are our largest facilities, and were not only selected due to their geographic location, but also due to their size, which better enables us to ensure proper social distancing as they have gymnasiums and large multipurpose rooms. The additional three sites are located within our housing sites. These include Arotera, Sidney P. Osborne, and Lou Crohn, where we have continued to provide indoor programming for youth since last year. Again, following the recommendation to open with a tiered approach, once we reach the moderate transmission risk category, our plan calls for opening our remaining 16 Tier 2 community centers. In this category, all community centers would increase their program capacity to 75%. Indoor recreation activities would continue by reduced, or by registration with reduced capacities, and at this time, we would also add open gym activities by reservation. Fitness rooms would open at 50% capacity as well, and masks would continue to be required. This slide shows a map now of both our Tier 1 centers in red and the Tier 2 centers in blue. The Tier 2 centers would provide a variety of recreation programs and activities, and at this point, all of our community centers would be open. Again, this would take place once we reach the moderate transmission risk category. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Human Services Director Marcel Franklin.
Thank you, Cynthia. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. Throughout our presentation, you will see pictures of our wonderful senior center members. I just want to make sure that I note all of these pictures were taken pre-COVID. There are 15 senior centers geographically dispersed throughout our city. As with our Parks Community Centers, our senior centers are as far north as Awatuki at the Pecos Senior Center to Desert West Senior Center in the West Phoenix, to Devonshire in East Phoenix, and as far north as Buff Senior Center on Pinnacle Peak Road. As Inger mentioned, our senior centers have been closed. With that, all in-person activities and programs ceased, as well as our congregate meals transitioned to home-delivered meals on the request, when those senior center members requested those meals. However, while our senior centers were closed, staff continued to find ways to remain connected and engaged with our members. Since March of 2020, we have held 3,000 virtual activities, made over 155,000 weekly wellness calls to our members, and over 140, 54,000 congregate meals have been delivered to our members' homes who would have normally had lunch at our centers. In 2020, the mayor and city council very, very wisely invested $2.7 million in CARES Act funds to provide for mitigation and safety measures in order to have our senior centers ready once it was time to reopen. These senior center improvements were based on recommendations from experts in the field of evaluating environments to mitigate or eliminate spread of infectious diseases, as well as the city's contracted epidemiologist. A few of these improvements from the $2.7 million that our mayor and city council allocated include updated ventilation systems, installed touchless faucets, light switches, and automatic toilet flush systems, installed motion sensors at front door entrances, plexiglass barriers, and we upgraded audio and visual technology. I also want to make sure that I recognize our Public Works and Information Technology Departments and the staff in the Human Services Department, Information Management Services Division, and our senior programs teams for all their efforts in implementing these improvements in order to bring our seniors back safely. As part of our reopening preparations, in order to bring our senior members safely back to our buildings, staff conducted research, including reaching out to neighboring cities specific to their senior centers. Most reported that their senior centers are moving towards reopening at some point, and for those already open, doing so with significantly reduced capacity and hours. We also sent a survey to approximately 5,300 of our senior center members, with over 1,300 responding. The survey indicated that 94% of our senior center members supported opening our centers for limited hours, 99% supported wearing masks and appropriate social distancing, and 79% reported that they have received the COVID-19 vaccination, and of the 21% remaining, over 72% plan on getting vaccinated. To that end, staff will work with partners to host vaccination sites at our senior and community centers, where we'll be able to specifically target our senior center members and parents and guardians of our children who are participating at our community centers. As with the Parks Department, this proposed plan is based upon recommendations from the city's contracted epidemiologists based upon the fact we're currently in the substantial transmission risk category. If approved, staff proposes to open all 15 senior centers at 50% capacity starting June 7th, 2021, offer morning and afternoon sessions with senior center members required to register to attend either the morning or afternoon session. This split-session approach allows for more members to attend, given the limited capacity. And then finally, the city's epidemiologist recommends no indoor congregate dining, as Cynthia mentioned in her presentation, only outdoor dining. As such, for the safety of our seniors, we will continue with members taking home weekly frozen meals at their request. When we're in the moderate risk category, we propose to increase capacity to 75% in all of our senior centers. We propose to continue with the morning and afternoon session with our senior center members still requiring to register to attend either the morning or afternoon session, which again allows for more members to attend, given the limited capacity, and finally, continue with those weekly frozen take-home meals based upon the recommendation of the epidemiologist for no congregate meals to ensure the safety of our senior center members. Specific to transportation to and from our senior centers for our members, we will resume that service with only members of the same household traveling together, and our transportation vendor will follow all safety protocols. I will now turn the presentation over to the city's contracted epidemiologist, Dr. Saskia Papescu, who has been providing technical advice on reopening of indoor centers.
Hi, and thank you so much for having me today. So I wanted to just briefly review the current situation right now that we're facing in Arizona and Phoenix and Maricopa County as well. As you see on this slide, we are kind of teetering in between substantial and moderate transmission with, you know, roughly, if you go to the next slide, we'll see here about 73, and it's slowly increasing cases per 100,000, and a percent positivity rate, meaning of those who are tested, what percentage are positive, of around 7.9%. Now, the reason why I want to emphasize this real quick is because right now, these numbers are a little bit delayed. April 17 through the, I'm sorry, April 11 through the 17th is the most up-to-date data, but what we're actually seeing is about a 27% increase in cases over the last 14 days for Maricopa County. So it's important that when we're seeing this, you know, a little bit on the fence, but slowly increasing, that we are cognizant, meaning that we take a tiered approach that starts slow. We're reopening these facilities in a very risk-matched way that acknowledges risk of transmission within the community. So by starting with a 50% capacity, we're able to reopen and strategically look at the plans to ensure that they're working and not overwhelming anyone. As you can imagine, when you start reopening things, especially with newer protocols, it can be a trial period for a little bit, and it's really important with vulnerable people that we take the time to ensure we're doing this correctly and not rushing into it. So within these plans, you'll see an emphasis, especially in eating outside. And, you know, as in Arizona, and I think, you know, we don't spend enough time talking about how that can be really challenging in the summer, but the reason why we have spent so much emphasis on this is because dining indoors is high risk. We have seen clusters of this, whether it's in long-term care facilities or restaurants, because this is a time where people are unmasked. There's variable ventilation depending on where you're at, which is, you know, as you just heard, something we've really focused on, prolonged periods of time. Usually, people are talking and interacting, and especially for children who are unvaccinated, but even, you know, with seniors who may not be vaccinated, although we are seeing good rates, which is really positive, we want to be very cognizant of the highest-risk activity, and that is indoor dining. So that's why we're really focusing on avoiding this, and even for children, making sure that when we are doing outdoor dining, we have misters, and if there is a severe heat warning, that we have a protocol in place that we can respond to that, and meaning we can bring it indoors, communicate with families. But overall, I think, you know, what we are really seeing with these plans is we're not quite in a position right now in Phoenix and in Arizona as a whole to just suddenly go to moderate transmission protocols, meaning 75% capacity. We really want to take the time to do this slowly and ensure that we're doing it correctly. You know, if you look at risk-match categories, LA and California has been a good example of this. They've done this slowly, ensured compliance, and now they have some of the lowest rates in the country. So these successful interventions, while we, you know, continue to increase vaccination rates and we can hopefully get ahead of this little bit of an uptick that we're seeing, I think it's really important to infuse that into these protocols, which is why we really took the time to address high-risk activities and the people that will be enjoying these amenities, because it's really important and something we take very seriously. So I just wanted to kind of communicate that because this is a little bit of a unique situation with our substantial transmission that we are seeing and a little bit of an uptick, and that's why we want to take this slow and do it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Papescu. As Inger mentioned in her overview, we will now briefly move on to a discussion on outdoor park activities. At this time, we are also recommending that we resume issuing permits for special activity requests. These are requests for private events with more than 50 people. Examples of these types of activities include birthday parties, family reunions, and large picnics. This would allow individuals to also apply for permits for beer, bounce houses, and amplified sound. I do want to clarify that this does not include large-scale special events, such as festivals or food truck types of events in the park. Special events that are open to the general public are still currently going through the city's Special Event Review Committee for approval. We also wanted to take this opportunity to have a discussion with you about high school pool rentals. Based on guidance, again, from the epidemiologist, we are recommending that we allow high schools to rent our pools as they typically do in the fall. Each year, approximately 13 high schools rent our pools for their swim and dive teams. Their season typically runs from August or early November, and the Parks Department provides aquatic staff for these high schools during the rentals, and the schools pay for staffing as well as the costs associated with pool maintenance and utilities. All high schools would be required to follow any of the City of Phoenix Aquatics COVID facility requirements in place, as well as the current AIA COVID guidelines.
So with that, Mayor and members of the council, the recommendation is to reopen indoor community centers and senior centers as presented, beginning on June 7th, and to resume special permits and activity requests May 10th, and resume high school pool rentals for the fall of 2021. Those things are outdoors. And with that, we're here to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you for all the work that went into this presentation and serving our community. Vice Mayor, now do we have a motion?
Yes, so a motion to approve item 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember comments, or I'm sorry, we do have one member of the public here to speak. We will open the lines for Tamara Fromm. Hello.
Hi. Thank you for providing me the time. I appreciated the presentation as well. So thank you. I am in favor of the Parks and Rec Department opening and renting the city's public pools to the public schools for the upcoming season. At this point, it looks like Parks and Rec is in favor of that, too. I guess my question is to the city officials, where does everybody stand on this? I work with a lot of parents at the Sunny Slope High School, and last month, we learned that the city, while you were planning to open the pools to the public for the summer, you would not be renting the pools to the public schools in Phoenix. I guess if that's something you plan on voting in favor of, then I can stop my talking now, but I guess we're all, our parents are wondering why. We don't understand because it doesn't make any logical sense to, to me or to us, and it, you know, we're just, we're very tired. We want to look forward. You know, these kids have been patient and accommodating. We worked through last season, you know, scrambling to find a pool, working with wonky hours, you know, every other day, working out. 50% of our swim team did not get to participate in these sports because we did not have the pool facility at our local school while these kids were virtually learning. And I think the parents just want to make sure that the council, you know, that we shouldn't have to tell how important these high school years are for our kids. And it's ticking by, and this new swim season won't be another year that our kids can get back. And so we're asking that the city do its best for the kids, rent the pools, the public pools for that matter, to the public schools in the best interest of the kids. And if there's a problem that we can help with or that needs to be solved, we're just asking that you let us solve it. We'll be very good about that. We're an educated, smart, enthusiastic group of parents. Our coaches are fabulous. The coaches in the public school system are fabulous, and they provided a safe and enriching program for the public schools last season. I have no, there's no reason they won't do that again.
Thank you for your testimony. If successful, this motion would allow reservations for high schools.
I have a question, Mayor. Sorry for the speaker.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you. Is her, is she questioning just for whether we would allow it for the fall, or is she asking for the pools to be rented to the high schools over the summer?
Thank you.
For the, sorry, for the fall. As I understand it, you're already planning on opening up the pools for the summer to the community, but that we were informed last month that the pools, the city would not be renting the city pools, the public pools, to the public school for our fall swim season. You know, Sunny Slope Swimming Pool is city-owned, although it's on the Slope property, it's not, we don't have any control over that. So our kids were bussed all the way over to Apollo in separate shifts on different days, wonky, and we're just, it's an important issue to the parents of swim team kiddos.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
And Mayor, just to reiterate what you said again to the public, if approved, this would allow the city pools to be rented, and specifically, the Sunny Slope Pool could be rented for the fall.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. I don't know if it's Inger or if it's, or if it's Cynthia. So if we... So if we are opening up, opening up the community centers, is there a reason why, and if we're only opening up at fifty percent capacity, why aren't we opening them all up at fifty percent capacity?
Sure. Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, and members of the city council, we are following the recommendations from the city's contracted epidemiologist to have a tiered approach, meaning that we will incrementally reopen, just that opening all centers at one time brings challenges with that, so that her recommendation is that we only open a portion of those so that we can work through those modifications versus going from zero to all of them all at one time. I would add to that, that while that's the primary reason, we will also have to work through some staffing issues to ensure that we're properly staffed to open all thirty of those community centers.
Okay, that's, and then, and then the other question is, because I know that majority of the schools are, are doing like, they're doing lunches indoors instead of outdoors, and I guess I just don't understand, why is it that we would do it in the public schools, but then we didn't do it in the community centers? And that's okay, and if that's what we go with, that's, I'm okay with that. But then my other question then is, in these, when it's extremely hot, when we get to the one hundred and eighteen, one hundred and twenty degrees, then what are, what's the plan? What are we going to do then?
Mayor and Councilwoman, it would be okay if the doctor could answer that first question, and then Cynthia could answer the second part of that question.
Hi, yeah, so I can't speak for the existing protocols with schools, but really, what this comes down to is that, you know, children are going to be in school, and then they're also going to be coming to these activities. So the goal with schools, you already know that they're being exposed to a certain extent, but, so, you know, they're pottying them, which is why they're also, and doing a lot of work around reduced classroom sizes, but in these environments where we can control high-risk activities, which is eating indoors, we really need to try to. You know, as I mentioned before, children are not able to be vaccinated right now, and while they don't, we don't seem to see many of them having a severe disease, we do know that they can get COVID-19 and spread it. So it is important, as we incrementally reopen things, and there is still substantial transmission in the community, to try and reduce those high-risk activities. And, you know, if that's a decision schools want to make, you know, I know that they have been really trying to make dining time, eating time as safe as possible, that's a little bit harder, but if we can control it, it really is the safer decision to make.
Thank you.
And Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, and members of the city council, I will add or answer your second question in regards to the contingency plan. So on days when there are, there is inclement weather or very warm temperatures that require a heat advisory day be issued, on those days, the children would be taken inside to have their meals, and we would ensure that that is happening at six feet or greater of distance from one another.
But, okay, okay. And then my last, and then my last question, I know that, I know we talked about this, like, and it feels like twenty months ago, a long time ago, and I should have brought it up when we, when we did the briefing, but I think, and I always ask this question, like, why do we close the pools on Memorial, on Labor Day? I know we open on Memorial Day, but I know that it's also incredibly hot right after Labor Day weekend, and I just think it might be, it might be good to think about maybe just keeping it, keeping the pools open maybe just for the weekends, maybe like a month later, so on the weekends, kids still have a chance to enjoy the pools while it's still hot.
So, Mayor, members of the council, so as many of you know, I was the aquatic supervisor and the Parks and Recreation Director for many, many years. We find that the attendance really drops down, but if that's something you'd like us to look into, you know, we certainly can continue to evaluate that. We used to be open at a portion of the pools through the month of September, and the attendance just really was very, very low, and so at some point, we made the decision that that was not beneficial as far as a financial situation, but we could probably look at that again if that's something we were directed to do.
I mean, I, I mean, Vice Mayor, I mean, if we could add that to the motion and try to look at extending at least for the, for the weekends, just because people have been locked in for such a long time, and we still have a lot of families that are out of work and are going to be looking for activities to be able to do on the weekends, especially right now that their budgets are still a little tight, because a lot of people are still not working, I think that would be good for our families.
Inger, is that something we need to add to the motion? I would look to staff, or?
I believe that it's something that we could evaluate, and if you want to make it part of the motion, then that is acceptable, yes.
Councilwoman Guardado, is what you, I guess the friendly amendment, is it to look into it, or is it to open the pools to a certain date?
I think it's to open, open the weekends, because I know during the week, the kids, on, kids go back to school on August fourth, and I would say that after the pools close for a month after that, on the weekends, keep them, keep the, keep the pools open, at least for thirty days while it's still, while it's still hot.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I think we need to do some evaluation for you, because it has a budgetary impact, but if, I think if the motion is for us to evaluate it and bring it back, we can bring that back at the next available council meeting to indicate what the options are and the budgetary impact of an extra month of weekend service at pools.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion to approve item twenty-one, plus an evaluation of pools opening on the weekends in September?
I'll second that again.
Thank you. Additional councilmember comments? Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I am happy to see our presentation to open up our facilities. I will say that that is a little bit dampened by not including the gyms and courts for our students who, during these very hot months, you know, don't have a lot of opportunities to exercise in other places. And I also, to piggyback on Councilwoman Guardado's questions about not opening them all, I do understand staggered openings so that we can get staff up to speed and kind of work out that the kinks, and making sure that everybody stays safe, and our mitigation strategies are working. We actually did that in the Valley School District, when we brought our students back and opened up in phases, but what can, my question is, rather than it being based on what transmission risk category we are in, but we have a date so that after the centers, the first, I think, is it sixteen centers are open? It's more than that, I apologize.
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, it is fourteen centers in Tier One and sixteen in Tier Two currently.
Thank you so much for that. So after the first fourteen have been opened for, I don't know if it's a couple of weeks or three weeks, that we would then look at opening the remaining sixteen, rather than it being based on the transmission risk category. We look at doing that.
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, one thing I might suggest we could do, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't have to be part of the official motion, but, so the programs will open on June the seventh. We can come back to you on the July first meeting with a report on what our experience has been in the first three weeks, and an update on the, on the transmission and spread in our staffing, and so that at least the council has one more opportunity to look at this before the summer recess for the council. If that's something that would be acceptable, we could, we will certainly be able to do that, return on July first with an update and potential council input on next steps.
Very much would appreciate that, Mr. Zucker. Thank you.
Council, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the staff for this work and for taking in the medical experts' advice. I think we're doing it the right way. I, obviously, I think we all pray and hope that we don't get a fourth, fifth wave, whatever, but seeing what's happening in India and other parts of the world, I think we should continue to look at science as our measurement of whether we open or not, and so thank you all for being cautious. I think what I wanted to add to the conversation is, we're having the vote on ARPA, on the ARPA money coming in. I would really appreciate, especially if we're looking towards seniors or other folks, our community centers are kind of the nexus where folks come together, where we're going to be able to support folks, and so I guess the question is, how, how can ARPA funds or things that we're looking to support help in the reopening and adding resources around COVID to the plans that you have? And then one in particular that I want to talk about is, and I asked this question in the briefing, is around the frozen food. It does seem that it could potentially be the healthiest, best option, but also, I would like to, I guess, have an evaluation in a similar way of us being able to do gift cards, being able to do something else, especially if the expectation is for folks to take that home. Is there a way we can, you know, some sort of gift card, some other way where they could get fresh food and not just frozen food? So, again, first question, how can these programs and the reopening be supported with ARPA funds? Second question, can we look at doing maybe a little bit better, also through our food programming and some of the work that we're already doing as a city, of figuring out ways to get fresh food to folks?
Vice Mayor Garcia, members of the council, Mayor, we will evaluate ARPA. Again, we get guidance on the eleventh. I know the first round of CRF, gift cards, there were a couple of cities, especially those in Florida, that got themselves in trouble with gift cards, so we want to see what the guidance says specifically and relative to gift cards. I will let you know, though, we will work with Public Works and departments to evaluate what their needs are relative to reopening and staffing and mitigation efforts that we could possibly use additional ARPA funds on.
Marshall, you want to address the fresh food piece, please?
Sure. My, Mayor and Vice Mayor, to your point and your, and the information you shared with us when we were briefing you, staff already started researching what other cities are doing in that area. We have not concluded that research yet, but once we have that available, we most definitely will be sharing it with the city management, and of course, our Assistant City Manager just mentioned about some other evaluations that would need to take place, but please know, we already started the research based upon your question when we briefed you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ansari. DeCisio.
I'm going to be voting yes, Mayor, but just a quick comment on it and explain my vote. I'm voting for this because it's moving, at least toward opening. We've got to remember that the individuals that use these services are people that generally don't have a lot of money. Shutting down, keeping the pools closed to fall for those that want to be able to use them, part of their leagues, is just insanity. I mean, I just, craziness, actually. But at the end of the day, these are people that cannot afford going to a fitness center, using pools there, workout equipment, or anything else, and they're not people that go to and belong to country clubs. These are people that are generally middle-of-the-road, hard-working individuals to the poor, to be able to, you know, they need to be open. This is their place, their way of relief, along with what Councilwoman Guardado said. People need to be able to get out, and this slow walk is just not in our, in everyone's best interest, but I'm going to be supporting this because it's moving it forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Astor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
We next move to item forty-six, Neighborhood Block Watch Oversight Committee's recommendations for the 2021 Grant Program Awards. Councilwoman Stark, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Oversight Council, but I would like to return the twenty-nine of Block Watch grants that did not receive a good score. My understanding is, they had a tough time reviewing these this year round. They did it online, and so they didn't have their normal processes. As you know, their packet looks about the size of our packet today. They do a lot of heavy lifting, and I want to have them have another opportunity to look at the twenty-nine that weren't funded, but certainly the ones that they did approve, I think we need to move forward on that, so that's my motion with an explanation. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any other council comments?
I have.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
I just want to thank the Neighborhood Block Watch Oversight Committee, that is a lot of hours for that committee to look at one hundred and sixty applications and not just, you know, read them, but review them and work through and decide which ones can go forward. So thank you for all of your work and time and dedication to our city.
Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add, echo the points of the two that our Councilwoman said, to thank the committee, but also, you know, my understanding is that the block watches that didn't receive quite the score that they needed to were very close. They all scored very highly, and just want to emphasize the fact that COVID obviously probably had a very big impact on this, and the groups have very different needs, so I'm grateful to Councilwoman Stark that we'll be revisiting those, because I think the block watches do great work in District Seven and all of Phoenix, so, and I'm happy to second the motion if it hasn't been seconded.
I think Councilwoman O'Brien beat you to it, but we can definitely note your strong support. I too am grateful to the block watches who put together these grants and come up with plans and do the work of safer community building, as well as the Oversight Committee and the staff that is supporting it. Roll call.
Mayor, we do have some speakers for this item.
I'm sorry. We do have some speakers, many apologies. We will open it up, and we will begin with Nora Curtin, followed by Lynn Collins.
Good afternoon. As I was introduced, I'm Nora Curtin. I'm coordinator for the Northtown Community Block Watch Phoenix Neighborhood Patrol. We are located in North Phoenix, District Three. I am speaking today regards a particular application number twenty-one oh five nine. Northtown is a fifty-five-plus community with two hundred and eighty-one homes. We have commonly owned areas which cover over fifteen acres. These are open areas, which are natural washes and a butt-to-drain adjustments. These are naturally dark areas, and they create security problems for our homeowners and are convenient for homeless encampments to be set up, creating additional security concerns. The Northtown PNP Group has been awarded grants for safety and security items for our residents in the past. We've also worked with our homeowners association to be a co-applicant for lighting systems for the common dark areas in the past. This year, we again applied with the homeowners association as a co-applicant for additional solar lighting systems for the dark areas that back up to some of our communities' homes. Approximately a month ago, I received a letter that said the Oversight Committee did not recommend our application, and it failed to meet the required score to be funded. We were not advised of the score that we were given, nor of the area that the application did not meet the standard, so we are concerned about this. Our applications have been consistent over the past years with all documentations required and showing the HOA participation in the grant process. Our HOA board is all volunteer. Our PNP members, as you all know, are all volunteers, and we have accumulated over seven thousand hours in the past year. Considering that time and the city hour, hourly rate of twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents, this calculates to more than a hundred ninety.
Thank you so much, Nora. Thank you so much, Nora. Um, and I do believe Councilwoman Stark's motion may, may be helpful. Lynn will be next, followed by Mark Davis.
Yes, this is Lynn Collins with the Collins Sun Devils. Uh, yeah, we received that same letter saying that, um, we didn't meet the requirement, but we've been very consistent. Every year, we've been getting about four, five of our Collins Sun Devil kids in college, even though they've been junior colleges or they've been Division of Two colleges. The program, I've been doing the program for eight years, and this has helped us a lot. And kids, I have kids that, you know, can't afford to pay, can't, uh, afford to be on a basketball team, and we use this to keep kids off the streets, to give them better grades. And within the last eight years, I'm averaging probably three, three to four kids going to college because of this program. And we go to Vegas and we play, we do a lot of stuff in California, and, uh, I just, you know, like I said, like, I never got a letter saying that, you know, that why I didn't get it or why we didn't get it this year, and we, we've been getting it the last eight years. And I just think that this, the program, the Block Watch, I mean, since I've been doing it, I mean, now that we teaming up with different restaurants, I got kids getting jobs, I was, you know, to even try to help just in case it just happened. So, you know, I just want to, you know, thank you guys for the last eight years, but I still, we, we still need that funding just because we are still helping kids. Our kids come to our program, their grades get better. They can't be in our program if their grade is not good, uh, they're not being disrespectful in school, getting in trouble. They can't be in our program if they're at home. The whole idea of this program and the Block Watch is to keep them off the street, get them good grades, and still, you may not make it in sports, but let's try to get scholarships and grades. And with this program, with the Block Watch, this is, this has helped us tremendously.
Thank you so much. Mark will be next, followed by Brittany Chipley.
Hi, mayor and council members. Mark Davis, uh, hi there. Roosevelt neighborhood, uh, just north of City Hall. Um, yeah, we've been applying for Block Watch a number of years, and, um, yeah, I, I, I couldn't imagine the challenge that, uh, Advisory Committee, uh, had in, in doing this during COVID and electronically in the packets and such. I, I, I really, that really kind of helped me understand more the context of why some of the, kind of the strange comments, I think, that we got on our scoring kind of resulted in there. And, and the idea of re-reviewing the denied applications, that, that's really exciting because I think that that's going to help a lot of, a lot of the folks on this call and concerned. So, I appreciate that and thanks for your, your service to our city.
Thank you, Mark. Brittany is next, and our final speaker will be Caroline Vencelike.
Hi, Mayor Gallo, and also Vice Mayor Garcia. I appreciate you having me. I am speaking on behalf of Bernard Black Neighborhood Association. We actually put in two grants this year, as we usually do for the past, um, two years. Our first grant, twenty-one eight, twenty-one dash one eighteen, which is the X-Men of Valor Project, um, we actually been receiving grant money for the past, um, gone on eleven years, and we've been very grateful for that, and that primarily allows us to have a program for middle-aged, um, youth boys, and it is a football program, and we've been very successful with that. So, we actually decided to do a girls' basketball program that we started a couple of years ago, and once again, gratefully, we received, um, this Block Watch grant money in the past couple of years. But unfortunately, this go-round, we received a non-recommendation letter, um, in regards to twenty-one dash one-two-three, which is our girls' program. And I just wanted to make it clear and just let you guys know that, just, you know, how, just reiterating what the Sun Devils, um, coach was mentioning, how crucial this is, especially been in South Phoenix, um, and we're in partnership with Caesar Chavez High School and primarily serve Council District Eight. Um, this program has been life-changing for our girls, as it has been for our boys for the past eleven years. So more, so more so that, you know, our girls, some of our girls were not even able to, not only able, unable to afford registration fees, um, uniforms, tournament fees, and so forth, which the grant money has, um, been able, been used to, um, to fund these type of fees, but life-changing to the point where some of our girls have not been able to purchase, um, you know, basketball shoes, and we have been able to use this money for that. And so, you know, it has provided this camaraderie, and we just need the money, so I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Caroline will be our final speaker.
Oh, thank you so much for giving me a moment to speak with you. I am also with Mark. I am the co-grant writer for, um, the Roosevelt Historic District, and, um, yes, COVID has made everything hard for all of us. And I just, um, thank you, Councilwoman Stark, for, um, the reevaluation. I think that would be really great. We've done some really good work. Roosevelt's very diverse because we go from Van Buren all the way up to McDowell, from Central to Seventh Avenue. So, we have single-family homes, we have group homes, we have, um, uh, a lot of diversity. And so, we've been working really hard, um, for, in the South, where I live, I live in the South, just to, um, actually help with, uh, the neighborhood not to be afraid of the police. And it's been, we've been able to do some really great, um, ice cream trucks and building activities with the police department, and, um, it's just been, um, really great, so we'd love to continue our work. So, thank you for reconsidering. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to all our community folks for their hard work on these grants and for building better neighborhoods. Vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Had a quick question for staff because it's, uh, seen a pattern here of youth programming and wondering, I mentioned ARPA earlier, um, obviously, that's yet to be determined, but is there other places, other ways where, uh, specifically with youth engagement or youth recreation, that we can support some of these groups?
Uh, Vice Mayor Garcia, members of the council, when we spoke last week about the potential uses of ARPA, one of those things was looking at youth recreational leagues and sports, um, entities to see if there's a way for us to incentivize or to replace some of the revenue that they've lost during the, the last fourteen months because of COVID. So, that is definitely something that we are, that we heard from you, we also heard it from our residents, so that's something that we're strongly looking into and hopeful that we can use COVID, um, funds on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
Yeah.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to item forty-eight, Agreements with Various School Districts for School Resource Officers. Councilwoman Stark.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Councilwoman O'Brien.
Yes, I'd just like to say that, um, I support the opportunity for school districts to choose to have school re, school resource officers in their schools. Each district's leadership team must be able to determine which resources best serve their students and communities' needs. For many students, school resource officers are a trusted community figure and seen as someone additional to talk to if they are experiencing bullying or problems at home that they may want, not want to bring directly to a teacher. The SRO program provides an opportunity to begin building positive relationships between our officers and our students that may extend into the community. Schools have many choices of resources they can provide or make available to students, and SO, SROs are but one choice for our district schools. I believe the SRO program is valuable resource to our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
Yeah.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
So, this is a, a conversation that's been happening in the community for a while. We've seen the largest high school district in the city, the Phoenix Union High School District, go away from, from SROs or reducing the number of SROs. I think it's very important for us to move forward with some of the accountability measures that are coming up and, uh, look at the processes and, um, the expectations of officers if a school district is deciding to bring them in. And so, because we have not been able to assure the safety of all, uh, students and of all Phoenicians at the hands of police, I'm voting no.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven, one.
We next move to item fifty-one, which is the Aviation Department's On-Call Consulting Services. Vice mayor, do we have a motion?
Uh, motion to approve item fifty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
No.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes six, two.
We next move to item fifty-three, Funding from SRP for Electric Vehicle Charging at Parks and Libraries. Councilwoman Ansari do have a motion.
Thank you, mayor. Um, yes, I move to approve item fifty-three. Um, I just want to say how excited I am that the city of Phoenix is jumping on this cost-saving opportunity with SRP to advance our electrification efforts, help better connect our city and clean up our air. I do want to emphasize that the city is saving a significant amount of money by doing this. Um, thanks to the incentives provided, we're saving about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, but more importantly, uh, you know, taking these steps to improve infrastructure for electrification is a huge, hugely important, hugely important step, um, to combating air pollution in our city. And my, during my first week, I joined Mayor Gallego to announce a new ad hoc committee, um, whose mission it will be to create an ambitious and equitable roadmap for vehicle electrification, so this is very exciting. So, I just want to applaud Deputy City Managers Karen Peters, Mario Penageau, Inger Erickson, John Chan, the Office of Sustainability, Parks and Recreation, Library and Public Works, and the City Engineer for their work on this. I think this just goes to show that we will need a lot of teamwork to get this done, um, from our parks and our libraries to streets, uh, to local and national partners. I'm very excited, uh, to get to work on this, so thank you to city staff for making this happen.
I will second, mayor, and I think her motion was even better than mine on Block Watch.
Well, thank you both. Uh, this is an exciting one. We'll be bringing eleven new electric vehicle charging stations to our city, and I hope that people visiting our parks and libraries will, uh, benefit from them. Thank you to SRP for partnering with us. It's especially meaningful, we're doing this vote on a day that has an ozone advisory, so trying to help, I hope, address air quality and advance the Valley as a leader in electric vehicles. So, thank you to the Councilwoman Ansari for her leadership on this issue and, and for a great motion. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
Uh, mayor, I'm going to be voting yes, and just want to give special thanks to Salt River Project. They've been an incredible partner, not just on these types of things, but there are a lot of other things that they do that generally the public never gets a chance to see. So, they've been an amazing partner in the city of Phoenix. They've been an amazing group for citizens in our community, and this is a great move for the city of Phoenix. It sounds like only eleven, but that's a pretty big number when you look at improving the accessibility and distribution network for electric charging vehicles. Uh, this is exactly what you need to be doing. We need to be doing as a city, is encouraging this type of activity. And so, thank you to the city staff that put this together, and a special thank you to Salt River Project for being a partner with us as they have in the past.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
All right. Next, uh, we go to Agenda Item Number Two, which was the Formal Meeting Minutes of February fifth, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please. What, uh, item number two, the Formal Meeting Minutes of February fifth, twenty twenty.
Oh, okay. I can't remember. All right. I thought we were back to item two and three. I've got it. Thank you, mayor.
We are, but you are correct. We are back to items two and three. This is item two, the Formal Meeting Minutes of February fifth. Okay, so, uh, hearing no additional comments, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. My, meeting minutes passed unanimously. Now, we move to item number three. Vice mayor.
Motion to approve mayor and city council board and commission nominations, accept the ethics commissions because it requires a roll call vote.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we do, I believe, have one member of the public to speak on this item. Jeremy, the floor is yours.
For the terms, oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. A quick search for the terms ethic commissions best practice, uh, results in a link to a seven-page document titled Principles for Designing an Independent Ethics Commission, which was created by Campaign Legal Center, a nonpartisan nonprofit concentrating on ethics in federal, state, and local government. After studying and participating in ethics commissions all over the country, uh, for cities and states, they put together these principles, best practices, and real-world examples of what works and what does not work. Um, they break it down into a couple of categories of independence and structure, enforcement, disclosure, training and advice, and a culture of integrity. Um, and they talk about that culture of integrity, uh, stating, "A well-designed and well-resourced ethics commission can help build public trust in government by creating a culture of integrity and holding officials accountable for violations of the public trust." City council has been given every opportunity over the last four years to prove the city is committed to integrity, but instead, the city has chosen exact, uh, has shown exactly why independence and structure, enforcement, and disclosure are a necessity for an ethics commission. For the last four years, the city has promoted ethics and the ethics commission in formal documents, announcements, and prominent links to the city's homepage. During that same four years, no ethics commission existed, and any complaints were not disclosed or reviewed by the independent commission despite being required by city code. As for independence, the members of the commission should be independent of those it provides oversight to, they should serve the best interest of the public, they should have dedicated staff, including independent experts and investigators. Our ethics commission is appointed by the city council to review rules created by the council and only allowed to make suggestions which can only be acted upon by approval of a supermajority of the council. That's not the definition of independent. And as for dedicated staff, the commission will be forced to use city staff. Um, when one of the members interviewing, uh, asked about, uh, how often the council will meet, council member Stark responded, "Hopefully never." So, I'd like to ask that, um, we review this and start over using best practices since none of them have been met at this point, um, and it's taken four years to implement.
Thank you. Uh, we do have a second comment. Diane Maholsky.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, very good. Um, I think I filed the complaint that started this process, and I want to thank you. Um, it's very, very important that, uh, citizens who appear before very various adjudicative bodies feel like the process is fair and, uh, that they'll be hurt. My complaint involves a conflict of interest, and it's very important. Um, my complaint involves a conflict of interest, and it's very important that, uh, citizens know that their arguments will be considered, because win or lose, the most important thing is for citizens to know the process was fair. And so thank you very much for going forward with this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, and this was only one agenda item, so we took all comments together, but the first vote is, does not include the Ethics Commission, um, and will be a voice vote, and then we will move to a second vote on the Ethics Commission. So this will be just on boards and commissions that do not include the Ethics Commission, as the Ethics Commission requires a roll call vote. All those in favor of approving the other boards and commissions in today's packet, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, we next go to the Ethics Commission, which does require a roll call vote, and I will turn to Councilwoman Stark, who co-chaired the Ethics Ad hoc Committee for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, this is a long time coming. I know that you actually were talking about it before I was even on the council. I think we had a very good process. Uh, we certainly had thorough applications, which really helped us in our decision-making, and we had a, a great two days' worth of interviews, and so I will recommend approval of the appointment of the members of the Ethics Commission.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second from Councilman Waring, who also helped interview those applicants. I am glad we are having this item today. An Ethics Commission is crucial in bringing residents' voices to the table to elevate discussion and processes around ethics in public service. I am proud of the diversity of experience and background that recommended candidates offer, and want to thank Councilwoman Stark and Councilwoman Waring for their leadership in the interview process, as well as our Judicial Selection Advisory Board, which has conducted two rounds of interviews to help bring forward candidates who have the highest level of review. Uh, the council began the process to establish an Ethics Commission through the adoption of an ordinance in twenty seventeen, and the adoption of the ordinance came years after the Phoenix Ethics Review Task Force issued their chief recommendation to establish an Ethics Commission in twenty thirteen. Um, I think this is an important process for our residents, and, um, the city of Phoenix is currently the largest city in the country without an Ethics Commission. So look forward to supporting the motion. Additional comments? Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
DeCicio?
No.
Guardado?
Mayor, I want to explain my vote.
Please do.
So I, I really, thank you, Mayor. I have received concerns from my constituents on the framework of this commission. I, I one hundred percent agree that this needs to be an independent body to handle these inquiries. However, until we get the framework right, I don't feel comfortable with the formation and appointments of these individuals. I want to be clear, I have no issue with them on a personal level, but the framework, I believe, and the process is not, is not the best that it can be at this point. Um, we have a couple of constituents in my district that have filed, uh, a petition that's gonna be heard at the subcommittee in a couple of weeks. And I think, as everyone knows, I want to take everything, um, that my constituents talked to me about very serious. I don't feel comfortable voting for this. I want to make sure that I can listen, that I can listen to them and see if there is any, any suggestions, um, that they have to make to this. I, I, I've learned, um, in the last few hours that people are very passionate about this and want to be part, part of this, part of this process, and we want to make sure that this is, um, maybe could be a little bit more independent, um, and for that, I'm gonna be voting no.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor? Stark?
Mayor, because the ordinance requires seven votes, I think it's critical to have all council members here to vote on the item. Therefore, I'm gonna change, uh, my vote to a no, so we can reconsider it for the next meeting. Thank you.
Waring?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Mayor, it fails at a five to three because it requires seven votes.
All right. That concludes the ordinances resolution portion of our agenda. Uh, we do have, um, a large number of folks here to participate in the planning and zoning, uh, items. We'll do a check with the council on timing. Would people like to see a break?
Yes.
All right. So, uh, as we often do with these lengthy meetings, we will take a twenty-minute break and convene at approximately four twenty-two for the planning and zoning add-on items and citizen requests to speak. Uh, we are on a twenty-minute break now. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to the May fifth Phoenix City Council meeting. We will continue with our agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion to suspend the rolls and take items seventy-three through seventy-six out of order?
So moved.
Second.
The second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signal nay. All right. We next move to public comment on the proposed memorandum of understanding between the city of Phoenix and ASME Local twenty-three eighty-four. We will begin with a brief staff report from our Human Resources Director, Lori Bates.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of today's item is for the council to have an opportunity to hear public comment on the proposed contract between the city and ASME twenty-three eighty-four, representing bargaining unit two. As you'll recall, we began negotiations in early January, and we are pleased to say that we have now reached an agreement. The agreement includes a slightly modified version of the accountability and transparency measures approved in the other union contracts in exchange for a lower compensation package of eight and a half percent over two years, as opposed to the nine percent over two years that the other groups received. In your packets, you have the proposed MOU with the new language identified in bold font. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. We will begin with Mario Ayala, followed by Christopher.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, my name is Mario Ayala, and I am the proud president of ASME Local twenty-three eighty-four, representing essential skilled trade employees such as fleet mechanics, electricians, water technicians, and trade helpers, all who make things happen every day. These men and women have sacrificed so much to provide essential services for the city and the community. Some of our members and their families have lost their lives during the pandemic, but Unit Two employees are still on the front line every day and have been since last March. We have negotiated for an equitable contract in good faith for the past five months, attempting to get our frontline employees the compensation and benefits they have earned, which recognizes their dedication and work ethic. Unfortunately, some of their sacrifices have gone unnoticed, some of you. To the city council members who supported these workers in this contract, not only in public, but when it really mattered, we thank you. On behalf of our families and ourselves, recognizing those who serve on your, on your behalf is a nonpartisan issue. We are people and not just budget items. For those who did it, we ask that you please stop pretending to support your employees and to stop running on a platform that is labor-friendly and progressive, because it's not true. When our members lose their lives, you offer your thoughts and prayers, show compassion, but those are just words, and when the opportunity presents itself to recognize their hard work and dedication, you stay silent. This contract brings ability, relief, and support to those frontline families. We support those who have supported this city and the community, and for that reason and that reason only, we ask that you approve this contract between the city and ASME Local twenty-three eighty-four. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final comment will be from Christopher.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Chris Idleberg, and I am the Vice President of ASME Local twenty-three eighty-four. On behalf of our labor group, I would like to thank you for hearing from me today on the matter of item number seventy-three on the agenda. Unit Two employees are the lifeblood of the city of Phoenix. Our members are found in almost every department across the city, including police and fire. The jobs our members perform go virtually unnoticed to the public and are thankless most of the time. Unit Two employees provide clean running water to our residents, as well as safely treat that same water as it leaves their homes. We fix and repair roads, keep the traffic signals running, make sure that our residents and visitors to the valley have a safe, clean, and well-running airport to fly in and out of. Prior to being shut down by the pandemic, our convention center employees made sure Phoenix shined to the rest of the nation when events were hosted here. Our members are even responsible for keeping the police and fire vehicles on the road to provide emergency services to our community. When the pandemic hit us all, our members did not have the luxury of working from home. They were the essential frontline workers who were relied on to keep the fifth-largest city in the U.S. running. We did not shut down, and many of our members and their families paid a heavy price. We spent the last five months negotiating with the city in an attempt to achieve a contract that is not only fair and equitable, but also recognizes the dedication and hard work our members gave, not only to their employer, but to the residents of the city as well. Our members should be recognized, and their sacrifice should be thanked. I want to thank the council members who have and continue to support these workers. I want to also say to those of you who generally do not, you also receive the services these employees provide. They deserve your support as well. For that reason, I ask that you approve this contract between the city and ASME Local twenty-three eighty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final public comment. We will close the public hearing and move to item seventy-four, which is the vote on the MOU. Council members, uh, do we have a motion? Uh, Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item seventy-four?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Guardado?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I would like to make comments on item seven, well, I guess I could wait for seventy-six. Um, early this week, I had a chance to stop by the ASME Hall to speak with union members. I was inspired to see how active and involved these city of Phoenix employees were in their union. I was proud to hear that over ninety-seven percent of them voted in favor of these new union contracts. I was also glad to meet a city employee like Ms. Willisha Burns, who works as an incredible, uh, works an incredibly demanding job that we've been talking a lot about. She is a nine-one-one operator. Because of the leadership of individual employees like Willisha, who have gotten involved in advocating for themselves and their coworkers, and the continued commitment of our city's labor unions, we have reached a contract agreement that I am very proud to be able to support. I think it is important to say as well that when our city creates good-paying jobs with benefits that can support a family and give employees the right to organize and have a voice on the job, what we are doing is creating the single best anti-poverty strategy. When Phoenix creates good jobs, we are keeping people out of homelessness. We are addressing the housing crisis by allowing thousands of residents to pay their rents and their mortgages. We are giving them the tools to raise their kids and get involved in their communities. So today, I, I just want to say thank you to Willisha and all of our city employees for the work they do day in and day out. They are the frontline workers that were not able to stop working. They were the frontline workers that when everything was dark, when it seemed that this pandemic was hitting us really hard, that wherever you turned, there was a chance for you to catch, to catch this virus, um, they were committed to their cities, to their city, they were committed to their jobs, and they continued, um, to come to work every single day, whether you were a nine-one-one operator, whether, whether you were, whether you were a park ranger, whatever, whatever type of work that you did, whether you worked in the water department, everyone came into work. And we need to remember these workers every single day, that they kept our city running, that they made sure that we had water services, they'd make sure that we, that we answer all of the calls to keep our city safe. So once again, I want to say thank you to all of you, and this is, and, and, and I am very glad to be able to support this contract, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to negotiate even better contracts for all of you, because you guys deserve every single penny that you guys are getting out of this contract. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Councilwoman Guardado. I think you, you put it, put exactly what I, what I wanted to say, so I won't repeat a lot of it. I, I do want to say that if we learned anything through this pandemic is that essential workers and the folks that went out there, um, were the ones who kept this city moving. Um, they lost colleagues, they lost family members, and they continue to work hard to make sure this, this city was, uh, moving forward. Um, do want to talk a little bit about the process. I hope in future negotiations, um, especially during the circumstances we saw this year, um, but now make it a, a regular thing to be able to have more time. Um, these two units, um, continue to, to fight in their negotiation. Um, they, they not only got a, a better contract, but they also were able to make sure that folks that signed before, two units that signed before, um, got a better contract. And so really proud of, of the folks who continue to fight, um, with all the pressure that was happening, and obviously, all the workers, uh, thank you so much, and glad that you're getting a raise and you're getting taken care of, uh, like Councilwoman Guardado said. Um, we hope to, to in the future be able to continue to take care of y'all as you take care of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark?
I too want to thank, um, our city employees. They do a terrific job, and these two unions certainly prove it during the pandemic. Unfortunately, we had a leak, a water leak, a major one on my street, and we didn't have water for probably about four hours. And thank goodness for our city employees going out and fixing the problem. I was so impressed during the pandemic, they were out in the heat fixing the problem. So I truly think they deserve this raise. I appreciate everything they do. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ansari?
I'll just add, I think everything's been said, but truly, it's, it's true. These, these workers, um, these city employees are heroes, are nothing short of heroes, and they should be recognized and awarded as such. So I'm really glad they're getting a well-deserved raise, um, and I hope that in the future, as Councilwoman Guardado said, we can continue to negotiate even better contracts for them, because, uh, they do so much for our city, they do so much for us without us even realizing. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It is exciting, as some of our peer cities unfortunately have to go through layoffs, that we can make this investment. Thank you to everyone who worked for today's outcome. Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
DeCicio?
No.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? I apologize. Waring?
No.
Thank you. Garcia?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes six, two.
We next move to item seventy-five, which is public comment on the proposed MOU between the city of Phoenix and ASME Local twenty-nine sixty, unit three. We will open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to comment on this hearing, so I will close the public hearing, and we'll move to item seventy-six. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item seventy-six?
Second.
Any additional comments? Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
DeCicio?
No.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes six-two.
We next move to items seventy-one and seventy-two, which concern the southwest corner of Fortieth Street and Southern Avenue. They are companion cases, and we will hear them together. We will begin with a staff report. We will then have a public hearing. We will have a ten-minute presentation, ten-minute presentations by both the applicant and the appellant, and then we'll have two-minute public comment from members of the public who are registered to speak. I will turn it over to our Planning and Development Director, Alan Stevenson, to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As you stated, these are companion items. Item seventy-one is a general plan amendment, and seventy-two is a related zoning case. The subject site surrounds the southwest corner of Fortieth Street and Southern Avenue down in the South Mountain Village area, shown in red on the slide. Item seventy-one is that general plan amendment. You see the slide showing you the outline of the parcel area in black. The light gray color, green color is our mixed-use agricultural designation. You see the gray Commerce Park designation to the north, and then red commercial, and then more traditional lot residential, three-point-five to five dwelling units per acre to the east of the subject site. The proposed designation change here is residential fifteen, ten to fifteen slash mixed-use ad designation with that brown crosshatch. The next slide shows the existing zoning for the property. The C-two zoning on it is for the northern portion of the property at seven-point-two-five acres, and then the southern ten acres is S-one, which is large lot residential. You see that there's a mix of zoning around it from mixed-use ag to the east, low-density residential on one acre plus lots to the south, that more traditional suburban residential, three-and-a-half to five dwelling units an acre to the east, then some industrial commerce park also to the east, and then commercial up to the, the north. This next slide shows the proposed site plan for the applicant's proposed multifamily rental project. The yellow line does denote one-story limitations on there, so that you can see where the area is, is one-story in height pursuant to the PUD standards. Hundred-and-forty feet from that property line on the south, they're required to keep a one-story twenty-feet maximum building height, and then also sixty feet along Fortieth Street and along Southern Avenue to also be sixty feet. I would note that the project has a minimum requirement of twenty percent open space, and the landscape setbacks are significant as well around the entire property that we'll talk about pursuant to a memo here in just a minute. The next slide shows the elevations for the project. These are conceptual elevations. The one-story product is twenty feet in height, and the two-story is thirty feet in height, and also noting that the, the yellow boundary, as we just talked about, had areas that are one-story limits around the perimeter of the property. In this case, the South Mountain Village Planning Committee did vote to recommend denial of the general plan amendment by an eleven-to-eight vote. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a six-to-two vote. Regarding the zoning case, the South Mountain Village Planning Committee did recommend denial by a twelve-to-seven vote, and the Planning Commission voted approval by a six-to-two vote. The Planning Commission decision was appealed to the council here to force a public hearing, and also signatures were submitted to require a three-quarter vote of the council to approve any change of zoning. Earlier today, a memo came out at the direction of the Vice Mayor to address some of the issues that he had heard from neighbors, and also to put forth a compromise between the two parties regarding the density. And so, that memo outlines a reduction in the density from one-hundred-and-ninety-three to one-hundred-and-sixty-six units, building height limit for the administrative offices of twenty feet, an increase in the width of landscape setbacks around the project, so that they are increasing a minimum of five feet to some of them up to fifteen feet of difference in terms of the setback increase compared to what was originally proposed. Requirement for utilization of shade trees, a minimum distance for the dog parks and dog-washing areas to be a minimum of two-hundred feet from the south and east property line, and any recycling and dumpster facilities to be a hundred-and-fifty feet away from those property lines to pull those away from the, the neighbors that are most concerned about the proposal. There's additional standards for parking lot lighting, for shielding, as well as updating of the open fencing concept, and, and then installing a gate along the, a portion of the property that has a trail that goes into the south that is accessed by other users, and then some disclosure requirement for area radio transmission towers that's, that are in the area. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission recommendation, adoption of the related ordinance, and motion, or related resolution, I should say, and then the zoning case would be approval per the memo from earlier today and adoption of the related ordinance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will turn to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone who's worked on this case. We had many meetings with the South Village leaders, neighborhoods, organizations, applicants, and so on. We spent many hours with you all trying to find a common ground. We respect the plans that exist for this area. I want to make sure that that's clear. We also understand that we, we must increase the city's housing stock while continuing to grow the services that we provide. I look forward to hearing from folks, from everyone that's shown up today. And as a representative of the district, will have the responsibility to decide at the end of this hearing how we're moving forward. So, again, just thanking everyone for their comments and looking forward to hearing them.
Thank you. We will begin with two ten-minute presentations, beginning with Jason Morin, Jason Morris for the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate the time and the opportunity. I, I will address the presentation as we have had this case now going on pre-pandemic. And as the Vice Mayor mentioned, there have been a significant number of meetings, not only with the village, the, the neighbors, the neighborhood groups, and all of the various stakeholders throughout this now over a year-long process. I have to say, I'm, I'm listening to the direction this case is going in, and obviously, we're going to be presenting the case as it was, as it was filed and as it was amended, and as we presented to the Planning Commission, although I, I understand from Mr. Stevenson's comments that this may be a, a less-dense product. With the Mayor's permission and the Vice Mayor's permission, we're going to present what was originally presented to the Planning Commission last, so we have an understanding of what we believe is an appropriate land use and why we believe this is an appropriate land use, and frankly, why staff has written a staff report in support of that land use. So, with that, if we can go to the first slide. To give an overview of the site, this is a seventeen-acre site. As we look at Fortieth Street and Southern, it's two arterial roadways, and it is surrounded by a plethora of different uses from single-family to industrial to commercial to multifamily and to a large lot, single-family to our south. So as we look at this piece, we see that there are significant numbers of uses that are all converging at this intersection. It is why this site, and Mayor, I know you're aware of it from your representation of the district, this has been-
Yes, and, and since you said, Mayor, our staff has asked me to say I open the public hearing, so please continue.
Perfect. Well, I will continue then, Mayor. You know this area has been challenging, given the transitional uses and the different uses, all of which converge in this intersection. As you can see, to the north is industrial and planned industrial. To the south is large lot. To our east is single-family residential at medium density. And then, as we look to the north and northeast, you see a variety of different uses, including multifamily and commercial as well as industrial. The next slide, please. This gives a different viewpoint, but it also shows the various zoning districts that we're dealing with, and why this can be such a challenging parcel, although it was zoned C-two some years ago, and there was the development of a Walgreens at the hard corner of Fortieth Street and Southern. The remainder of the property, despite having a commercial designation on a large part of it, never developed. And that is twenty-four years of growth while this parcel has not developed. And, and that's for a variety of different reasons. And there have also been cases that have been denied, in fact, numerous cases, that have either been withdrawn or denied or did not have support. But we can see from this exhibit that we are surrounded by a variety of different land use areas, and at an intersection with roughly thirty thousand cars per day. Next slide. And it's also helpful to get a visual of the intersection. At the hard corner, I'd already mentioned the southwest corner has the Walgreens that we sit behind, and then we have a multifamily building on the northeast corner, where we have on the northwest and on the southeast two gas stations. Next slide, please. Any one of those will do. Okay. In terms of the appropriate land use, this is an area where you can see from the red, those are all commercial land uses, and I think this quote is significant in terms of staff recognize that this is a transitional area. It's transitioning from single-family residential to the south to commercial uses to the north, and that the development that we have proposed, because it is that middle ground, is appropriate located at this intersection. Next slide, please. I also think it's appropriate to look at the history. I mentioned that despite the fact that this was zoned in nineteen-ninety-seven and has been vacant in the back for twenty-four years, and this is despite the fact that we have proximity to the airport, major employment areas, and I-ten. Next slide. In terms of the zoning history, this area has been zoned C-two and S-one, and there were other cases in the area that were withdrawn over the years because of neighborhood pushback, which is just an indication of how difficult it's been to find that sweet spot of what should exist on this property while abiding by all of the overriding land uses. Next slide, please. Slight background on the MUA. This is within the MUA area, but is not zoned MUA, and it's one of seven-hundred-and-seventy-three acres that was designated as MUA some time ago, back in nineteen-ninety-six, approximately the same time that the Walgreens was developed on this site. And you can also see from this exhibit that we are at the far end of that area, not in the middle of any MUA area. Next slide. This was our original site plan. And we can talk more about the site plan as we look at. Our original site plan had twelve units per acre. It had two-hundred-and-five units. I say original, frankly, we had other versions that had more units that were not included, because we had some meetings with neighbors prior to filing this and members of the village, and actually reduced the unit count before filing the case. So, as you look at this, you see that there was parking along Fortieth, and there was less open space. But as we look at the next slide, please, you can see the transition to more centralized open space, a larger buffer on the south, fewer units overall, and more proximity between the units, as well as a lower degree of the two-story units, and further separation between all of our transitional areas on our boundaries. Importantly, we also took all of the parking away from Fortieth Street and replaced it with landscaping, so that from the perimeter, it had a very green look and feel, while also incorporating many of the mixed-use agricultural requirements. Next slide. Just to give a sense of where we stand, I think this is a significant indication of our density. This is the density as it's proposed today, at one-hundred-and-ninety-three units. We are one of the lowest single-family rental densities in Phoenix. We are below the average, and given the size of the, the site, we are at eleven-point-two units per acre, which is extraordinarily low, even before taking any other additional reductions. Next slide. In terms of the general plan, the staff has done an excellent job, but, but this just pulls out some of the reasons that they have supported our general plan amendment, both prosperity and environment, as, as well as the health element has been met. Next slide. Housing Phoenix, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, the city Housing Phoenix Plan does indicate a need for additional housing within the city of Phoenix, and it, and this was adopted in twenty-twenty, but it does talk about fifty thousand homes being necessitated by twenty-thirty, and this is obviously in accordance with that plan. Next slide. We also have support, although there has been a very vocal opposition to this case. It has come primarily from the residents to the south and the larger lot homes. We have done our best to work with that opposition, while at the same time encouraging the support in the community, which is why we are able to show you this map that shows support surrounding our property. Next slide. I, I should also point out that that support comes from both businesses and residences in the area. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna conclude with this, Mayor, because there is a lot to talk about in terms of the benefits of this case, the, the fact that we are adhering to the baseline area overlay district, as well as taking elements of the mixed-use agricultural, that we are finding a transitional use for a piece that is sandwiched between commercial, industrial, and residential. In terms of traffic, although we've heard that mentioned, it is less traffic than the existing zoning would permit, because it is zoned C-two for a large portion of it. We are complying with those overlays that we have heard so much about, and we believe are important to the community. We have support from neighboring residents and businesses, and we've had the ability to redesign the plan in order to incorporate so many of the landscaping elements and land use elements from the plans that are important to the South Mountain Village. In terms of the land use district, this is that sweet spot that provides housing, quality housing. We've worked with the community. We've managed to negotiate community benefits that don't exist in other plans that are cognizant and they are recognizing the needs of this community. Appreciate you following the Planning Commission and staff's support of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We will go next to Trent Marchak, the appellate.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, hi, Mayor, and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for your time today. My name is Trent Marchak, resident homeowner, three-seven-three-one East St. Anne Avenue. Over roughly the last year, this project has been a bit dramatic. Parenthetically, the residents and constituents of Phoenix involved in this project respectfully request that the PUD process be reviewed, perhaps referencing this well-documented project for learnings on how neighborhood collaboration can be better encouraged and improved. I come Tuesday representing the opposition to this case. This includes about ninety-five percent of the residents in the contiguous and adjacent eighty-acre community to the south, thirty-five or so acres of business owners to the west, and about twenty-plus acres of nearby residents across Fortieth Street and the other side of Thirty-Sixth Street. Additionally, various members of the community across South Phoenix and into Levine have been in collective opposition to this development. I was told that things could move fast at the slot, at the last minute. It's my first time here in front of the council. And they have. Therefore, given Vice Mayor Garcia's adept proposed compromise, I would just want to apologize to any opposition who may be surprised by the neighborhood representatives collectively adjusting to the real-time events. We trust when you hear this out, you will be as understanding as we are. At, at the direction of Vice Mayor Garcia, a memo has been drafted and subsequently socialized with the neighbors, and was reviewed by Mr. Stevenson as well. This memo contains additional stipulations to the PUD. We are appreciative to Vice Mayor Garcia for meeting many times with the neighbors, even when the applicant canceled their participation last minute. This memo shows that the Vice Mayor has listened to the neighbors, and we largely yield to the council members' efforts. We just have one request for adjustment to item number seventy-one on the general plan amendment, and a request for one modification to a stipulation on item number seventy-two, the rezoning case. The change we request to item number seventy-one is for GPA SM one-twenty-eight to reflect, quote, "five to ten dwelling units per acre" traditional lot, the AOD MUA, rather than ten to fifteen dwelling units per acre, multifamily BAO D MUA. As the density proposed by the Vice Mayor has shifted the appropriate general cat, plan, sorry, sorry, has shifted the appropriate general plan category accordingly. We trust that this- We trust that this will be received as an uncontroversial ask aligned to the memo. The members also humbly ask that for item number 72, the proposed stipulation 1B91, be revised down from 166 to 156, 156 total units. This would align with the max total units allowed through conventional zoning slash MUA PUD precedence such that the PUD cannot be said to be inferior to conventional zoning. We know that one of the goals of a PUD is to be superior to conventional zoning. There are three main stakeholders in the PUD process, the applicant, the city, and the neighbors. The stated purpose of the PUD is supposed to be achieved by the applicant, quote, "using, quote, 'a collaborative and comprehensive approach,' end quote. Despite the applicant's near total lack of respect for the community process up until about a month ago, the neighbors have remained actively engaged and focused on the merits of the case. We are committed to being pro-development to the benefit of all stakeholders, which is hopefully displayed in our acceptance of Vice Mayor Garcia's proposed compromise. In the interest of protecting our fellow residents and constituents moving forward, we'd like to review some of this neighborhood inclusion since July 2020. The neighbors were literally muted last minute in the initial neighborhood meeting. Our pointed and direct written questions were ignored for over six months. About half of those 250 signatures and support of this project are questionable at best, including a purported forgery. The neighbors have been publicly branded with despicable and false accusations. Local nonprofits have said they received promises of $10,000 to support this project in exchange to propagate these false accusations. Consequently, we received threats to our physical safety and some tragically even received death threats. The neighbors have also been intimidated with the prospect of lawsuits, one as recently as last night. Neighbors have been offered personal bribes to change their position. So although the promise for paid support is technically legal at this time, the bar association has said to us that they would like to know if the exchange of monies for nonprofit support is consummated, as they said that would be an ethical violation. We wonder if this is the collaborative approach the city envisioned in the PUD procedures document and that the city wants to encourage. It wasn't until the three-quarter vote protestation petition was secured less than a month ago that the applicant began to finally work with the neighbors. The vice mayor has graciously attempted to bring us together and fairly represent both sides. Despite all the noise cited above, the neighbors put those differences aside to try and find a solution that works for all parties involved based simply on the principles of good planning. Included in these discussions was representation from multiple members of the village planning committee, a member of the planning commission, and prominent business people, all acting in their capacities as members of the community. Unfortunately, despite promising the neighbors an opportunity to review the applicant's concession and their full site plan before the city council vote today, the applicant did not come back to the body of neighbor representatives for review of all proposed changes to the PUD narrative or site plan, and none of those were actually included in the presentation that we just saw. It wasn't until about 2:00 PM today that the neighbors became aware of the memo drafted for stipulations. We appreciate that stipulations have been proposed by the vice mayor that incorporate many of the neighbors' concerns. We tip our collective hats to the vice mayor and to the city plan department for these efforts. According to the PUD procedures, quote, "The planned unit development, PUD, is a zoning designation intended to create a built environment superior to that which is accomplished through conventional zoning districts," end quote. Judging this PUD against the objective standards within the city's own documents, the neighbors strongly believe that conventional zoning remains superior to this PUD when the density of this PUD exceeds 156 total units, 156. Therefore, we ask that a GPA change to five to 10 dwelling units per acre traditional lot, BOD, MUA, and stipulation 1B91, we reduce the total units from 166 to 156 total units. We express appreciation of the city plan department for their efforts to help craft the memo. We know a lot went into that. And again, we express great appreciation to Vice Mayor Garcia for the stipulations he has negotiated to find a workable compromise. Lastly, we reemphasize our ask that the entire PUD process be reviewed to identify opportunities that more respectfully include the residents and constituents of Phoenix in the future. Respectfully submitted, Trent Marchuk.
Thank you, Trent. I will turn to our staff, who will call members of the public to speak for two minutes each.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Ryan Boyd. Ryan, are you on the line?
Yes, may I proceed?
Yes, please proceed.
Perfect. For the record, my name is Ryan Boyd, 1069 West Taylor Street with the Urban Phoenix Project in support of the GPA. And as mentioned here, we haven't seen the proposed compromise, but at the same time, our main goals and interest in this case are really to increase the density on this location, which is between our arterial streets, across the city street, catty corner from additional apartment complexes, and really what we thought a good way to gently increase the density of the city of Phoenix in an appropriate area. And so with that in mind, we could probably support or the vice mayor's stipulations as well. Our main issue again here is just really touting the fact that density can be good for the city of Phoenix. It means making better use of the limited resources we have, and is really crucial, as noted in the opponent's presentation, to meet the goals we have in the housing plan. If City of Phoenix continues to be a major location for new residents coming in from across the country and across the globe, we need to be building more housing to really make sure that there's places for people to be there, and that requires making good use of land like this. We're going from vacant lot to, well, here in about 150 units, that's a great start and something we really support and appreciate on a step to make Phoenix a little bit more urban, a little bit more walkable, a little bit more welcoming for all. With that, I can take any questions, but thank you so much for your time and in support of the GPA and zoning.
Our next speaker is Beth Hensy. Beth, are you on the line?
Yes.
Thank you, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and Vice Mayor Garcia and council members. I'm Beth Hensy. I'm one of the property owners of the vacant land at 40th Street and Southern, along with my husband, my two brothers, and my sister. For the last 29 years, our family has worked to maintain our property by picking up trash, spraying weeds, and repairing the fence. We had various farmers try to farm the property. However, it was either too small for a large farmer to justify moving their equipment or too large for a small farmer to handle. The citrus trees died, not due to lack of water, but due to old age, then had to be removed due to fire hazard. As owners, we work together with the Brown Group, a local Arizona developer, to bring to you the Sanctuary at South Mountain, a single-family residential rental home community, which offered after a great amount of community outreach and compromise, has received both planning and zoning staff approval and planning commission approval. We believe that the Sanctuary at South Mountain will beautify the neighborhood by transforming our vacant, underutilized land into a beautifully designed residential, single-family rental home community full of trees and flowers. With 20% open space, our Sanctuary families will enjoy spending time in their own private backyards, the dog park, the community pool, or the community garden. Please welcome the Sanctuary at South Mountain, a place to call home. And I also want to address that all of our signatures that we did were valid. There were no forgeries. That is not something that I would do. I'm a mother of 11 children, and I have eight Eagle Scouts, and I am a very honorable person, and I do not appreciate being questioned in that manner. And I appreciate everyone here, and I want to wish every mother a Happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina Luna. Tina, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, please proceed.
Yeah, I just have a very good idea.
I can't hear.
Tina, are you still on the line?
I also cannot. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. I apologize for that. Thank you for being patient with me. I just wanted to say that I just want to talk in favor of the project. Housing is really sorely needed in Phoenix and all over the valley, and it looks like it would be a great improvement to that corner. Like somebody said, it's a very mixed area, so I think that this improvement, it just, it really makes a lot of sense, and it, I think it's going to really improve the area. So thank you for letting me speak, and I hope everybody approves the project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rodney Patterson. Rodney, are you on the line? Rodney, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, please proceed.
Yeah, I'm in favor for the housing. I believe it will improve the community around 40th Street and Southern. It will bring more tax dollars to the schools and city. It will give the opportunity for the new generation to remain in the community. It'll also generate more business for the small businesses. I believe it's a win-win, it's an all-around win, in my opinion.
Our next speaker is Gregory Brownell. Gregory, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, please proceed.
I just want to say thank you to the mayor of the city council for your service, for everything you do. Thank you to the Vice Mayor Garcia. Up until recently, the city was, the city planning was doing a PUD without community involvement, which is a kind of a terrible use of the PUD. They were only working with the attorney, and Vice Mayor Garcia came to the rescue. I'm not sure I completely agree with the compromise, but I know that Trent represents the community, and I think the compromise would be better than what we have. I just want to point out to people that think this is bettering the community that this is actually a slum with good landscaping. The houses themselves aren't very much better than shacks. That's how the, that's how this model works. This is not the typical model that you see where houses are used as rentals. This is a model that probably has a return on investment in five years. So it's not what it looks like. It's not going to help us in terms of our housing stock in the South Mountain community. In fact, if anything, it lowers the housing stock, not affordable housing. This is going to be high rent. Should never have got past zoning. That's a discussion to have later. I just only want to say if they can do that here, they can do it anywhere. And this is money over the village, money over the planning process, money over community well-being, and it's basically a slum with nice landscaping. And if they can do it here, they can do it anywhere. And my biggest fear is they'll be doing it along the light rail, and there's no way to stop it if they can do it here. So again, I want to thank everybody for the work that they do. I especially want to thank council or Vice Mayor Garcia for two things.
Our next speaker is Marsha Bushing. Marsha, are you on the line?
I am, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gallego and council members. My name is Marsha Bushing. I live at 3319 East Highline Canal Road, and I noted that none of the speakers that spoke in favor of this project indicated that they lived anywhere close to this project. I want to give an extra shout-out to Vice Mayor Garcia, who went out of his way to schedule and hold meetings to try and bring all sides of this dispute together. That effort led to a neighborhood coalition, but in my opinion, only token modifications on the part of the applicant. I understand that Vice Mayor Garcia may propose a compromise, and the city staff has drafted a memo dated today in that regard. Presidentally, I favor the compromise, except for the new proposed stipulation 1B. I would request that it be changed on page nine, item one, Development Standards Table and page 27, Comparative Zoning Table, Maximum Density. Replace 11.2 dwelling units per gross acre with 7.9 dwelling units per gross acre for the south parcel and 9.8 dwelling units per gross acre for the north parcel, not to exceed a total of 150 units. That would result in 79 units on the south and 71 units on the north because of the difference in size of the parcel. I am suggesting that the north and parcel and the south parcel of the property be treated differently and the overall density be equal to or less than 150 units. I realize that Phoenix needs housing stock, but this is in a unique MUA-designated area in order to preserve that mixed-use agricultural feel we need. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barricette Jebri. Barricette, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. We would like to thank you for this moment, or I would like to thank you for this moment. I am a homeowner on the south side of the neighborhood. I wanted to say one thing. Yes, we do understand that we don't want this land to be empty, and I think our council member, Vice Mayor, knows this, and I thank him for making the effort to meet with us, to involve the landowner and the firm to come up with a plan. But we were never a part of the plan from the beginning. In 2019, I went to the village planning committee, and they were told that they need to go back to the basics and work with the community when they told them that 85% of the people of the community and the neighborhood agreed. That was not the case. And then we came back again this year. We were never a part of the process. We were left out. Vice Mayor brought us back, but we never started on the same way. So what we lack on this, we know that we need more housing. We know everything that we need. However, honesty and decency was out of the question. How the village planning committee were treated, threatened because of the wrong information was wrong, Jason knows it. And even as recent as a few weeks ago, they were telling us, it's still evolving, reviewing, we cannot commit, we can't tell you the density. If they could work on 156, we could work with them, we'll be with them, but deny it today. They cannot have, as they.
Our next speaker is Blake Peterson. Blake, are you on the line? Blake, are you on the line? It appears we don't have audio for Blake. Our next speaker is Kay Shepherd. Kay, are you on the line?
Am I, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, please proceed.
My name is Kay Shepherd. My million address is 2324 East Baseline Road. I have lived in this community now for over 40 years and in Phoenix since I was born. I have lived in this community now for over 40 years and in Phoenix since I was born. I worked very hard over all these years to promote quality and diversity in both commercial and residential development. This where may have diversity in housing needs, it certainly doesn't have the quality that we need. And I want to thank vice mayor Garcia for all his work on this. It's greatly appreciated. I've worked with a lot of council people over the years and he has just been one of the best. So again, thank you very much. Since the neighborhood said that they would do the compromise if it went down to 155 units, I would then withdraw my opposition to it, even though it's not really the quality that the area needs, nor the zoning sensors in excess of 40 acres from 32nd Street to 40th Street on the north side that has multifamily zoning. You take care and thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Robert Underwood. Robert, are you on the line? Robert, are you on the line? We do not have audio for Robert. Our next speaker is...
Can you hear me? This is Robert Underwood. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, first I'd like to thank Mayor Diego's and vice mayor Garcia and all the council members for your hard work. I know you guys have a tough job and you're not always appreciated. I do appreciate the job that you do and the difference you make for our city of Phoenix. So thank you for that. I am a local resident. I live at 3834 East St. Catherine Avenue in the Bartlett-Herd Ranch Association. I've been there for over 40 years. I'm also a local business owner. In fact, my business is just west of the proposed property at 40th Street and Southern. We own 30 acres and we run a nursery and also my landscape business. And, you know, we've been actively involved in the zoning cases around this area. In fact, I rezoned my area to mixed-use agriculture 20 something years ago and followed all the stipulations that the city asked us to do. I am definitely have been opposed to what's going on here as far as the density from the very beginning. And we've stated that emphatically. I thank vice mayor Garcia for spending time with the community and listening to our concerns. And I thank him for the compromise that he has proposed. I am willing to work with him and the council. If they lower the density to 156, that's what we wanted it to be originally. And I think he's come up with a good proposal, so I think we can make that work. So thank him for working with us. And I appreciate all you guys do, so I would support it based on his recommendations if we can drop that density to 156. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Aguilar. Matthew, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So my name is Matthew Aguilar, lifelong South Side resident. My support of the project, especially with everything in regards to the CBA, the Community Benefit Agreement, is widely documented throughout this case. So I'm actually here to carry a message for the Honorable Shelley Jackson, school board member down here on the south side, also South Side resident, could not make it today. So they asked me to carry their message of support for the Community Benefit Agreement and the efforts to implement it by the developer. And that's it. My support. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teri Benelli. Teri, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor and council. I'm Teri Benelli, the executive director of Local Initiative Support Corporation. We've been engaged for many years with the South Phoenix community through quality of life planning and community capacity building efforts as a community development financial institution. In 2016, we engaged ASU MRed with the Urban Institute to participate in the Turning the Corner project. The results were an anti-gentrification and displacement baseline data report and planning effort. Formerly incarcerated people are 10 times more likely than the general public to become homeless. The revolving door of incarceration is perpetuated when people are not connected to housing services that they need after release. In addition, when people cannot find stable housing, they are more likely to recidivate. A Community Benefit Agreement supports our findings and addresses the housing instability crisis. Securing affordable housing with a market-driven solution for those members of our community who have been intentionally ignored is a proactive action driven by the community that the list fully supports. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zara Geda. Zara, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, hello, mayor and council members. My name is Zara Gayessa. I'm a social worker and I work in South Phoenix. I'm speaking today in favor of this project. As a social worker, I've worked with formerly incarcerated individuals who struggle with obtaining stable housing and there are not many housing resources available for these individuals. This is largely due to the employment barriers and explicit discrimination formerly incarcerated people experience. Landlords and property owners often discriminate against applicants who are formerly incarcerated. When people are not connected to the housing services they need after release, this increases their chances of recidivism and homelessness. Over studies have found that when formerly incarcerated people received supportive housing services, they were less likely to be rearrested. This is why I support the 40th Street and Southern Avenue project. This project is a coordinated effort between community members and the developer to maximize benefits for the South Phoenix community. The developer has agreed to benefits such as prioritizing housing for South Phoenix residents, waiving application fees for local residents or returning residents, and changing the screening process by ending automatic disqualification for a prior record. We need people and resources in our community. We need to invest in solutions that strengthen our communities. The 40th Street and Southern Avenue project is a step towards that. And I strongly urge you to vote in support of this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hannah Hayman. Hannah, are you on the line?
The council should support this measure. The developer has gone out of their way to work with the community on this Community Benefit Agreement, which is unheard of, as you all know. And the fact that they were able to work with community to, you know, offer these, you know, new policies, these new, this housing that's going to be available to formerly incarcerated folks is huge and is something that all developments should be working towards. Because once, you know, somebody is released from the cages that Phoenix police locks them up in, they need places to go to live. And the city has been, you know, working to continue to segregate the city since it has existed. And something like this will go a tiny way towards rectifying that. There still needs much to be done, but this is definitely a step in the right direction. And I think, as you all know, especially Yasemin, who I had spoken to before on this, you know, over a year ago, that formerly incarcerated folks need housing and we need more dense housing, especially if the city is going to survive with as little water as there is here and as few resources as there are here. The city needs to be much more dense. And so I hope you all will approve this measure. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Helen Mendizabal. Helen, are you on the line?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, my name is Helen Mendizabal and I grew up in South Phoenix. And I just wanted to share a little bit about the climate injustice and sustainability aspect of this housing program. This Community Benefit Agreement is only the first step of many to ensure that directly affected peoples are not just involved in the community decision-making, but have actual ownership over the decision-making process. I believe this creates economic stability, environmental stability, and social stability by investing in community gardening spaces that provide communal spaces for people's personal, emotional, and social well-being while also providing overarching societal and environmental benefits. I also, considering that formerly redlined areas, especially in South Phoenix, deal with the intersections between food deserts and extreme weather impacts, I think sustainability is the balance of the environment, economic, and social needs of today without compromising the needs for tomorrow. This is pretty broad, but at its core, it's not just a set of topics like water conservation and recycling, but a set of practices for a way of being. This, I would just really hope that you guys take that into consideration and listen to directly impacted people. And I hope that you guys really approve this. I yield the rest of my time.
Our next speaker is Lola Nasangu. Lola, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I'm a lifelong South Phoenix resident and I was displaced due to the accessibility, the lack of accessibility in housing for myself and my family. I was displaced through incarceration. I grew up in South Phoenix. I went to TG Bar and went to Percy Julian and then I went to South Mountain until I got shipped out of South Mountain High School to go to Camelback because it was a more racially balanced school. And I think about how South Phoenix belonged to me. I played in the lots that were surrounding the area that this development wants to go into when I was a young child. And I think of all these people who are talking about what's good for our community. And I remember wanting to remain always to raise my children in South Phoenix to be part of the community where I grew up. And when I came home from prison, I wasn't able to come back into that community. And I think about how I'm listening to folks say things like, the people who are talking aren't from South Phoenix or aren't being, living in South Phoenix. And I just want to challenge people to think about how many of us are displaced. I have to live in Levine. I very much would love to move back into South Phoenix, but I don't have access. And I listen to what this developer has been doing, negotiating with community organizations, negotiating with the folks that live in South Phoenix, who really are in the margins. The people who don't have the privilege of saying, well, I live in South Phoenix and I'm one of the only people who gets to live here and I get to talk about this, and failing to recognize that, like, those of us who actually don't live in South Phoenix, we still have a right to talk about it because I want to live in South Phoenix and I can't. So this is the community I was raised in. I really urge city council to please listen to us as we tell you, this is what we want. This is how we, how the community benefits is by allowing the people who've lived there to remain there, not to continue to push people out of communities. And I think that this Community Benefits Agreement is, I've never heard anything like it. And so I urge you to look at it, read it, see what they're willing to do. Yes?
May I ask a question of Lola?
Please do.
Lola, as a former incarcerated person, can you talk a little bit more to the Community Benefits Agreement and why it's important to you personally?
Yeah, the Community Benefits Agreement actually speaks to directly impacted formerly incarcerated people by suggesting that, because one of the main reasons I can't live in South Phoenix is because I can't pass a background check. I was convicted in 2003, so you can imagine how long ago that was. And even though property management companies say over and over, oh, we won't run your background, we'll run your background but won't consider it, they always do. And this Community Benefit Agreement actually says that people will not be disqualified based on their background checks. And that's a huge, that's a huge win for people like me. Because I, again, like, I struggle. I have to rent from private owners who will listen to my story. And when you have, you know, these large developers or you have, like, property management companies who don't have that experience and don't care, we get kicked out. So this provision being made for us makes this housing accessible. And another thing that they were willing to do, and I saw our community who are directly impacted folks really light up at the idea, is that they were offering to offset the housing expenses to 50% for people who are housing unstable. And so making a commitment to share three of the homes that will be in their development at a lower rate to make it accessible to the community is huge. And that being formerly incarcerated could qualify you makes such a difference. I heard a social worker talking just earlier saying that how housing instability is so prevalent among those of us who are formerly incarcerated and recidivism rates are directly tied to it. This is huge. This is a huge win for our community.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Venable. Elizabeth, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, basically what I wanted to say is I'm currently standing in federally-supported housing. And basically, this project, although it doesn't, it has a stronger social justice component, it seems similar to projects which are funded through the federal government. And the opposition arguments are roughly the same. And the opposition arguments seem similar also to oppositions I've seen domestic violence shelter places get. And I'm not equating the two, but there is a need for justice in the community. I support this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anthony Ray. Anthony, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to speak my opinion. I do oppose this project, but I do support the proposal presented by the vice mayor with the one exception that we respectfully request a maximum of 156 units. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Twana Ray. Twana, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the vice mayor and city council for the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to say thank you to the vice mayor. He participated in multiple meetings between the community and the applicant within the last several months after this was denied at the Village Planning Committee. He tried to help put something together, as Trent alluded to, or not alluded to it, as he stated earlier. They did, the applicant did not attempt to cooperate at all with the neighborhood until the planning commission, not even until the planning commission. It was actually after that when the three-fourth petition was approved. I do want to speak to the fact that people keep making the statement as if this is an affordable housing project. It is not. It is not that at all. This is a money-making project for the developer, plain and simple. For the developer and the owner. It does not benefit the community at all. The proposal that vice mayor has presented does help the community, but we are asking that you would reduce that amount to 156 because we are looking to keep the MUA intact. And we appreciate you doing that. There's three total units that the applicant offered up for formerly incarcerated people, single parents, and first responders at 50% rate. These rentals, if created, would be going for market rate. That is not affordable housing. So the formerly incarcerated and all these other individuals would still be at a disadvantage and you still would not have access to those rentals. So again, thank you, vice mayor. Thank you, city council. We ask that you would support councilman or vice mayor Garcia's proposal with the exception that you will put 156 maximum units on that property. We worked very hard to do that. Thank you so much.
Mayor, Twana was our final speaker for these items. Thank you.
I will close the public hearing and turn to vice mayor Garcia.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for everyone.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for everyone who spoke and for your comments. I do want to highlight that this PUD exceeds some of the standards of the overlay, that many of the changes that we've put into the memo that have been shifted from the initial application. We've had a lot of conversations with community surrounding this project and you heard the variety of comments we've had today. Super thankful for all those conversations. Honestly, being here for over a year and a half, I learned a lot through this case. You know, there's an expectation, the general plan of five percent open space, this product is going to have twenty percent now. We were able to increase the setbacks. So part of the reduction of density, make sure that the neighbors to the south and Mr. Underwood to the west or the folks to the west do have greater setbacks. We've added open fencing. We'd also asked the applicant to decrease the height of the project and move the dog park, community garden, or any of the projects that might disturb the surrounding neighborhoods, specifically the neighborhood to the south, to be moved in the inner part of the property or the central part of the property. While in the conversations, many of you all have expressed the willingness to work out and reach a compromise. I want to thank you all for that intention and the conversations that were had. I really can't say much more about the neighbors, the willingness. I do also want to applaud the developers and the conversations with the CBA and hearing some of those stories of how that's going to impact folks. I think also kind of helped this come along. To, and I guess I'm going to be making one motion first. And I would say to the neighbors, and I know there's two asks, I think on item seventy-one, I'm with you all on shifting that. On item seventy-two, I don't think it's fair to bring it down an extra ten units. I know that's what the ask is. The original proposal was over two hundred and ten units and I think one sixty-six is fair here. And I hope that, speaking to the developer, we will continue to have conversations as this moves forward to make sure that everyone's being good neighbors with each other. And so with that, I want to, on item seventy-one, motion to deny as filed and approve the MOU residential five dash ten dwelling units per acre.
Second.
Vice Mayor would just add and adopt the related resolution with that.
And adopt the related resolution, sorry.
Any council member comments? Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Astor? Dark?
Yes.
Waring? I apologize. Waring?
Yes.
Thank you. Garcia?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to item seventy-two, the companion item. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve for the Planning and Development Director memo dated May fifth, 2021, and adopt the related ordinance.
Second. Any council member comments? Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Guardado?
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Please do.
So, yeah, so I just want to thank Vice Mayor Garcia and Ellen and the neighbors and the developer and everyone that came together for a compromise. I know that this is something that Vice Mayor Garcia has been working on for a very long time. So I can see your organizing skills coming out and doing some great work with everyone here together. And I think this is how developments should really run, where everyone comes to the table and there's compromise and we're able to listen to everyone and have good outcomes. So I'm going to be voting yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Dark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gallego?
I wanted to explain my vote. I want to thank folks who participated in this process and who also commented on this process. We want to be able to have respectful dialogue where people can feel safe participating and sharing their opinions and we will always look to continuously improve our process. In this case, I will vote aye.
Passes eight zero.
That is our final agendized item for today. We will next move to citizen comments. I will turn to our city attorney to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We have one member of the public to address us today, Elizabeth Venable. The floor is yours.
I would like to yield my time to Mr. Frank Urban, who's also a resident of the city of Phoenix, if that is permissible.
And if you could provide your own comments, we are not allowing donations of time.
No? Okay. Tell me what to say.
I would like to see more homeless shelters built.
We would like to see more homeless shelters built.
More affordable housing, more-
More affordable housing? Well, what are limitations? There are limitations on some of these shelters and they really need to be appropriate to populations, right?
Right.
What are some of the barriers? Time, right?
Time, yeah.
Yeah, the length of time. Is it three months? And is it meaningful, are the programs meaningful, right? And we will try to pre-register in the future because he has quite a lot to say, but it's difficult, I would say, as someone that tries to get people on. For example, Faith, that was supposed to speak, she happens to be sick. It's difficult to get people on these calls and so it really limits democracy. And I shouldn't get upset by this, but it really does upset me because we used to be able to come in and there would be like forty of us participating. And now it's like you have to pre-register, you have to have WebEx or a phone. There is no democracy for these people unless you have technology or somebody like me to facilitate it. And it's disturbing if you're going to have me comment and you're not going to have me comment. I find that's wrong. That's it.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.